So, let us look at the board and see it. Do you click on it?
Yes sir.
Now, I will start with the questions in the group. So, please take your group, questions have come. If you can see it, then you can check it. Is it there?
Yes sir.
Okay, so we can start now. So, today we are going to discuss about the cash flow statement. So, what is cash flow means? There are two types of flows, inflows and outflows of cash. Business has a cash inflow and a cash outflow. Now, the cash inflow and outflow are the statements. This is the cash flow statement. The cash flow statement has two methods, direct method and indirect method. We do not have any questions. This is the question. We have learned indirect method. When we have learned indirect method, we have mentioned it in the question. We have learned indirect method. There are two methods, direct method and indirect method. But we cannot do any method. So, the easiest one is indirect method. So, the cash flow statement has three separate groups. So, it contains three separate sets. The first is the cash flow from operating activities or the cash flow from operations. Cash flow from operating activities. Okay? So, the cash flow from operating activities is the first step. We have done that. Three separate steps have been completed. The first step is the cash flow from operating activities. I have given the question to the man. So, we are not checking it. We are not checking it. Now, I have shown the illustration number three. I have shown the first page. I have shown the first page. I have shown the format. Now, let us see the format. How is it? Let us see the question. Now, let us see the initiation. So, from the following information, a certain net cash flow from operating activities for the year 2003. That is the question there. Net profit before taxes given, income tax paid, depreciation, return of fixed asset, profit on sale of land, interest on dividends paid, dividend received, proceeds from earthquake disaster settlement, increase in the amount of stock, decrease in debtors and decreasing credit. These are the items. Now, let us see how to format it. Let us try it. So, the cash flow from operating activities is the format. Let us try it. We are taking the net profit before tax and other extraordinary items. It is a business profit. We have discussed it in the previous day. Profit and loss account. We are calculating what? Net profit. Net profit. The net profit is before tax and extraordinary items. It is a tax before items. It is said. What is it? It is said that the net profit is the tax before items. It is said. Now, we will adjust it. After all the adjustments, the profit is obtained. Depreciation is said. You know. It is an expense or income. Say. Depreciation is an expense or income.
Expense.
When we discussed it in the previous day, we have taken all the depreciation. We have taken all the depreciation. We have reduced it to the net profit. Now, in the business, there are two classes of expenses. This is the problem. The first one is known as operating expenses. And second one is known as non-operating expenses. Sorry. So, what are operating expenses? For the real operation, the expenses are operating expenses. This is the real expenses. For the real operations, we have to calculate the profits. For example, if the salary is paid, this is the operating expense. Rent is paid, insurance is paid, electricity bill is paid, purchase of raw materials. Now, all the other expenses are operating expenses. If we are doing business like this, we have a lot of profit to be calculated. What are known operating expenses? It means there are certain expenses which are considered as expenses but not exact expenses of the business. This is the real operation. It is a depreciation. We have discussed it. When we discuss depreciation, we have less. When we discuss depreciation, we have a little amount. It is another part of the asset. We have a separate account. Is it? We are keeping in a separate account. So, depreciation is said. It is a non-operating expense. It is a depreciation. The second one is the interest. We have paid the interest. We have taken a loan. It is a loan. Loan is paid and interest is an expense. It is not an operating expense. What is the expense? It is a non-operating expense. Is it there? It is a non-operating expense. So, let us call it. So, interest. The decrease is the second one. The interest is the second one. Now, let us talk about the other things. Let us. For example, if the loss on sale of some assets. If we have a company, we have a lot of losses. For example, I have done a business. I have made a car. I have a car. It has twenty thousand loss. It is a business loss. But it is not an operating loss. It is a non-operating loss. Now, let us talk about the loss on sale of assets. Assets. This is the non-operating expense. So, mainly we have talked about three or four non-operating expenses. Also, if the dividend is paid, the business is paid by shareholders. If the dividend is paid, it is not an operating expense. It is a non-operating. Now, let us talk about these four things. These are the non-operating expenses. Clear? What is the non-operating expenses? How is depreciation not an operating expense? This is not the real operation. It is not. It is an expense. But we are separating it in a particular way. So, it is a non-operating expense. This is the same. Interest, loss of sale of asset, dividend, all of them are non-operating expenses. The same way we have operating incomes and non-operating incomes. I have thought about it. Is it operating income or non-operating income? I have thought about it. Okay? Commission received. If we are doing business like this, it is operating income. Or it is not operating. Commission received.
Non-operating.
Operating income. Rent received. Non-operating.
Non-operating.
Operating income. Commission received. Rent received. This is something. Or discount received. That is the operating income. But some incomes are non-operating. I have talked about it. I have done a business. Another one is. I have bought an asset. Now, I have lost some assets. It is a non-operating expense. I have bought three lakh rupees. I have a business. I have spent three lakh twenty thousand rupees. So, twenty thousand rupees is profit. If there is a business operation, it is not there. If there is a business operation, it is not there. That is sales. Now, what is it? It is a non-operating income. Non-operating income is what? Profit on sale of assets. Profit on sale of assets is a income. This is the same. Income from investment. I have done a business. But I have certain shares in another company. I have got a dividend. It is not the business operating income. It is a non-operating income. It is income from investment. Now, let us look at the four categories. Now, let us look at the four categories. Operating expense, non-operating expense. Operating income, non-operating income. The operating expense is not there. So, first we have to identify what are the non-operating expenses and non-operating incomes. Now, let us go to the format. The format is easy. Net profit before tax and extraordinary items. Now. Now, let us add it. We have seen all the known operating expenses. Know operating expenses. Now, what is the depreciation? Interest?
Loss on sale of assets.
If the dividend is paid, the dividend is paid.
Paid.
Tax paid. Tax is a different item. Tax paid. All the non-operating expenses are paid.
Sir, interest received.
Interest is paid. It is not received. Expenses are paid delivered. Okay? The other thing is we have to less what? Non-operating incomes. If we have non-operating incomes, we have to. Okay? Non-operating. So, that is all. Now, let us get the answer. Now, let us try it. 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 Operating profit before working capital changes. I have noted as W's. Working capital changes. Operating profit before working capital changes. So, we have a doubt. What is the non-operating expense added? Non-operating incomes reduced. Now, we are preparing a profit and loss account. In which we are debiting all the expenses. We have done it. And crediting all the incomes. The last one is the net profit. Now, we have the net profit. We have the net profit. After all of this, we have to add the expenses. Add the incomes. So, this is the operating profit before working capital changes. Clear? Okay? Now, let us talk about it.
Sir, what do you want to say? Operating profit before working.
Rather.
Sir, before working capital changes, what is the reason?
Okay. Now, let us talk about it. What does working capital mean? Actually, working capital means it is a difference between current asset and current liabilities. These items have to be adjusted. It is the profit before. This is the current assets and current liabilities. The adjustment is the profit before working capital changes. Now, in this case, four things are there. First, the current assets. Or the current assets. The current liability is less. I have a short form. Now, let us try it. If the current asset is less, we have to less. This is the increase in current asset. If the current asset is less, we have to deduct. I have given the bracket. I have given the bracket. Less. If the current asset is less, these items are less. The opposite is the current asset is less. If the current asset is less, what is it? We have to add back. Add decreasing current asset. Add it. Add it. The value is changed. Okay? Again. Now, the same is repeated. The current liability is the opposite. Now, let us add increase in current liability. Not too good. And decrease in current liability, we have to deduct. Decrease in current liability, we have to deduct. Okay? Decrease in current liability, we have to deduct. And the answer is good. Cash from operations. Now, let us try it. If we do the problem, we will solve it. Cash from operations. Now, let us try it. If we solve the problem, we will solve it further. Now, we have talked about it. Net profit before tax and extraordinary items will be given in your question. Add the non-operating expenses there. Unless non-operating incomes, then you will get operating profit before working capital changes. Now, the current assets and current liabilities have four operations. If the current cities increases, then deduct it. If decrease in current cities is there, then add it. If increase in current liability, then add it. And decrease in current liability, then deduct it. Then you will get what? Cash from operations. Okay? Clear? Clear?
Yes sir.
Okay. Now, let us try it. I have asked the question. Now, let us try it. Now, let us try it. Now, let us try it. Yes, please. So, first question, let us look at it. The net profit before tax is given. Tax and extraordinary items are the tax before. The tax before the net profit. The statement is the cash flow from operating activities. Sometimes you can put a double dollar. Single dollar. So, net profit before tax and extraordinary items. The question is fifty five thousand. Now, I have talked about it. Now, let us talk about it. Now, let us look at 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 it. Add non-operating expenses. Now. I have talked about it. Before tax, we have to get the tax. The tax is the one we have to get. Now, we have to get the tax. Depreciation, return of fixed asset. Depreciation is a non-operating expense. Now, what is it? What is it?
Add in.
Add it. It is depreciation. Amount? Twenty two thousand. Now, let us look at the profit on sale of land. The non-operating income is what? Interest on dividends paid. If it is a non-operating expense, then we have to add it.
Sir, depreciation two thousand five.
Two thousand five. Two thousand five. Interest on dividends paid. Interest on dividends paid is how? Thousand five hundred. If it is a non-operating expense, then we have to add it. Clear? Next. Dividend received is what? Proceeds from earthquake disaster settlement is a separate item. Now, let us talk about it. Increase in the amount of stock, decrease in debtors, decrease in credit. Now, let us try it. Now, let us add two non-operating expenses. If you have non-operating incomes, then we have to add it. Now, let us add it.
See.
See. Now, I have talked about it. Non-operating incomes. Now, let us talk about it. Profit on sale of land. Land, we have talked about it. It is not an operating income. It is a sale of assets. It is a non-operating income. Now, let us look at it. Now, the profit on sale of land is how? Five thousand rupees. Now, I have put it in the bracket. The amount is in the bracket. Next. Dividend received. If it is a non-operating expense, then we have to deduct. If we have deducted, then we have to add it. Profit on investment. Or income on investment. If we have done the investment, then we have to add it. Dividend is the one we have to add. Now, let us add it. Dividend received is a non-operating income. How much is the dividend received?
Thousand.
Thousand. Now, let us add it. Now, let us add it. Now, let us add it. Now, let us look at it. Now, let us look at it. Two thousand forty nine. Fifty three thousand. Is it fifty three thousand? Yes. Now, let us talk about it. Operating profit before working capital changes. Is it okay?
Yes.
Now, let us talk about four operations. 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 If the current asset is increasing, then less. If the current asset is less, then add it. Now, let us add it. If the current asset is less, then add it. If the current asset is more, then add it. Now, let us add it. Now, let us talk about the increase in the amount of stock. The value of the stock is also increased. Now, let us add it. Now, let us add it. If the current asset is more, then add it.
Less. Same.
If the current asset is more, then add it. Increase in stock. Amount. Seven fifty. Put it in bracket. Next. Decrease in debtors. Debtors is what? This is the current asset or current liability.
Current.
Now, let us talk about it. If the current asset is less, then add it. Now, let us add it.
Add it. Add it.
Decrease in debtors. How much? Three hundred. Add it. Put the sign in bracket. Last one, decrease in credit. Credit is a current liability. If the current liability is less. If it is less, then add it.
Minus zero.
Let us see. If the current asset is less, then add it. If the current liability is less, then add it.
Less.
How much? How much? Two hundred and fifty. So, what is the value there? Fifty two thousand three hundred. Fifty two thousand three hundred. And that value is known as cash generated from operations. Cash generated from operations. Now, let us add it. Cash generated from operations. Now, let us choose the value. To continue that one. Fifty two three hundred. Okay. Cash generated from operations. And there is one item is there. Income tax paid is given already. So, we have to deduct that income tax paid here. We have the income tax paid. Less income tax paid. How much? How much?
Twenty two thousand.
Twenty two thousand. So, it is thirty thousand. So, this is actually the cash flow from operations. But some problems are there. There will be certain extraordinary items. Extraordinary items are. Earth cake. Settlement fund, disaster fund. Or insurance company gets the disaster fund. If you have it, then it is extraordinary item. Extraordinary item. Is it an expense or an income? What is it? Expense is what?
Income.
Income. Now, let us talk about it. If there is any issue, then we have to adjust it. Now, let us talk about it. Cash flow from. Cash flow before extraordinary items. Now, let us add it. Now, let us add it. This question has an item. What is it? Airtime. From earthquake disaster. All the problems are there. Now, let us talk about it. Disaster settlement amount. Add it. So, what is the value there? Two thousand.
Two thousand.
So, the final value is thirty two thousand three hundred. That is known as the cash flow from operations.
Thirty two thousand five hundred.
Two thousand. Is thirty two thousand three hundred or thirty two thousand five hundred?
Five hundred. Five hundred.
Oh? Now, let us look at the value. It is wrong. Thirty two thousand three hundred. Hello?
Text lines are wrong, sir.
No. Text lines are wrong. Thirty two thousand three hundred. That is cash flow from operating. Now, let us talk about it. Now, let us talk about it. So, this is the answer. Is it clear? So, I have talked about it. We have to take net profit before tax and extraordinary items. Now, let us talk about it after tax. After tax, then we have to add it. After tax, then we have to add it.
Add it.
Add it. Now, let us add it. After tax. Now, let us talk about it before tax and extraordinary items. Now, let us talk about it. Non-operating expense has four important items. First, depreciation. Interest paid, dividend paid. Then, loss on sale of any asset. It is a loss. Now, let us add it. Then, less non-operating incomes. It is the income from investment. That is the dividend received. Or the interest received. Then, low profit on sale of investment. If you have any assets. Then you will get operating profit before working capital changes. Now, let us talk about it. If the current asset is more, then deduct. If the current asset is less, then add it. The opposite is the current liability. If the current liability is more, then add it. If it is less, then add it. So, you will get cash generated from operations. If income tax is given, then you have to deduct at that time. Now, let us add it. If it is not, then add it. Then you will get what? Cash flow before extraordinary items. If there is any separate items, then it will be added. That is an income. So, that is the thing. Clear? Now, let us talk about it. Now, let us talk about it.
Yes. Okay.
Any doubt? Any doubt? Please ask.
Sir. Now, let us talk about the cash flow from operations. Why it is the amount of significance?
fine अदा इधर नमला business इन आप रियल cash operations अतिरंजना नमक करिया में देखा अदा इधर cash flow from operations बोले ना दोनों डान ए दार्त तक इस business इन the operating activities इधर पोसिटिव फिगर आया इतने माना केदार पति business इन इनके तना income सुनो ना business इन the real income बोले ना thirty two thousand three hundred इधर significance इधर नमला business इन इनके इधर पोसिटिव आए तेरी two thousand three hundred वान तो बोलना लेना दोनों business lot inflo को दला को दला नहीं thirty two thousand three hundred rupees inflo अब नमला cash adjustment करके नहीं हो इधर मून सेक्शन सुन दिया ना आदि में बोले ना first one is known as cash flow from operating activities second one is known as cash flow from investment activities and cash flow from ah there is section cash flow from investment activities and also cash flow from financing activities
finance
ऐसे इमून सेक्शन सुन करने करनी है निंगर करके आए तो ला cash position निंगर कर ले निंगर कायल ने ना उड़ी डुबा पूरे business इन the cash निंगर आरिया द पोर्ट को इतिला आया ना नमक दिया में देख ensure या नुम बनेगा financial statements और इधर दे रहे हैं दे statements मात्रा माना compulsory trading and profit and loss account and balance sheet but now the cash flow statement is also compulsory because we can know we can understand what is the total inflow of cash and total outflow of cash and what is our cash balance is it correct or not that we can या निंगर उदय चोट नमला वीड़ा income प्रदान अट नमला salary वेरो रिमॉर्न इनकम्स नमक चला नमक कितना रिंडा इतना अलांग नमला वीड़ा लें दिन इनके ने नदर बोले ना एक्सांपल अग्रीकल्चर क्रॉप्स अगर लेस्ट चला funds लेकर वे funds गल एला नमला total inflow of cash and total outflow of cash को रख दिया the cash balance should be correct ले correct सो अगर लो चल items ensure दिया डिटेल आता मून सेक्शन को देखने बरेक अब करके okay so shall I continue
net profit after tax after tax रहे ना बोले ना
net profit after tax वन गए ना just नमला starting लेना before tax अना नमक वेंट tax तो अब आप टैक्स दिलचस्प add in बिलीव देखना दे before tax okay
सर इनका टैक्स paid actually नमला paid इधर अब आप इधर cash flow operation आरे ना आदि अले
अदा इधर नमक तनी के ना heading नो cash flow sorry net profit before tax and extraordinary items अना नमक वेंट
okay okay right
इनका टैक्स paid ऑलरेडी paid चाहिए तो ना बोले ना चाहिए तो लाफ्ट टैक्स तनी टैक्स दिलचस्प add in
clear
clear next question इलस्टिशन नंबर फोर नमला तनी के ना इलस्टिशन नंबर फोर कुछ गुड detail आता नमक चाहिए ना चला questions so pushing and along so Gengal Emiral Limited reported profit of two lakh fifty thousand for the year ended thirty first March two thousand three there are items depreciation on building depreciation on planning machinery furniture amortization of goodwill and low sum sale of mischief I will discuss what is amortization later next the current assets and liabilities are given below then the opening balance and closing balance is given there accounts receivables stock on hand cash on hand accounts payable and expenses payable so these are items given so we will start with the net profit इन्हें नमला नो को बट टैक्स ने कुछ ना बोले ले पद दर्द कम इस बोले ना मुरादी बोले ना दिखना profit बोले ना दोनों नमला सिंचिया it is net profit before tax and extraordinary items टैक्स कुछ mention देने लेकिन नमला नमला slow tax ने देना okay so we will start with the net profit before tax and extraordinary items अलग net profit amount ने two lakh fifty okay इधर नमला add in अंदर add in अंदर बोलियो इधर add in नम hello
depreciation
अलग add in
no no no
नमला तने पढ़ के समझ के कारण अगर आप confusion plus non operating expenses नाल non operating expense अंदर लादिन डिप्रेशन अना तनी के ना मून अंदर सो वे आर adding back depreciation on building on building the answer is thirty five thousand depreciation on planned and mission depreciation of furniture eighteen thousand next अरे अमोटेशन ऑफ goodwill अंदर वैल्यू amortization गेम अमोटेशन means deduction अन्यथा depreciation कोई याना but goodwill is an intangible asset अदर उदाहरण नमला इकला इन डिप्रेशन पर लाइन बेक ना वाक्का अमोटेशन okay so it is also a type of depreciation so इधर ना goodwill how much goodwill के वैल्यू अतिरंजना twelve thousand वैल्यू नहीं याना देखना देखना add in
add back
लास्ट आइटम बोले ना दोनों low sum sale of machinery machinery मिट्टी पर नष्ट अंदर इसे non operating expense or income इधर
operating expense
non operating
expense
expense इसे low so it is an expense so low sum sale machine twenty thousand so इतने ना add that किया so आर्किंग लोन चाहिए ना add that के चला टैंक से बोलियो anyone hello आप किंगल
one lakh sixty thousand
इन्हें लागू दे add in तो लाख fifty thousand should add yes
fourteen lakh fourteen lakh ten thousand
fourteen lakh ten thousand this is known as operating profit before working capital changes is it clear next इधर नमक तारे कुछ कार्य बोले ना दोनों the current assets and current liabilities are given they are opening and closing balances given in the question is it yes नमक अदर नो काइंड operations नमक नो आदि माकाउंस रिसीवेबल्स opening balance is thirty eight thousand closing balance is forty two thousand वाला केवल आयता वाला लॉजिक आयता मात्रा इन्हें चाहिए ah thirty eight thousand forty two thousand I so accounts receivable बोले ना current asset अना current liability
current asset
current asset
current asset अब इन्हें
increase
increase
increase इतने amount आई इन्हें चाहिए दिखने
four thousand
four thousand नमला देखना increase in current asset वन ना लेने ना नमला
let's see let's see
नमला इधर देखना दोनों increase in
four thousand
accounts receivable four thousand let's see नंबर आया putting it in bracket clear next अरे आइटम नो का stock in hand अना opening balance is seventy five thousand closing balance is sixty eight bucks stock को बोलना लेना ना current asset or current liability
current asset
current asset increase यदि decrease
decrease
decrease how much
ah
seven thousand is decreasing so देखना decrease in stock वन देखना
add in
add in इलायची के कुमार वाला कुछ विरस पॉन्डी ने okay सुन add in decrease in stock clearly आर्क वेरा issues अंदर लो seventy thousand okay any doubt some shit देखना लार किंगल
no sir
okay next cash in hand एडिकेट द cash flow statement we are not taking cash कारण नेरे रिंज चुचलो एक बार अदा इधर what is the significance of this cash flow statement नमला cash flow statement द मून है तो बोले ना cash flow from operating activities they are financing activities they are investment activities investing activities इधर मून इन दे balance चेवट नमला opening cash balance अब तनी के ना द cash in hand eighteen thousand add इधर final answer you will get the closing balance अदा इधर thirty two thousand answer पिता then we can say your answer is correct cash flow statement नो इन इधर त्रिंग करने ना द ओपनिंग cash balance add in अब इधर नमला चाहिए ना नमला आदि ओरो ओरो operations पढ़ चुके तो पिने मून क्लब इधर इन्हें okay बट cash in hand नमला इधर एडिक्ट अंदर इस statement अंदर एडिक्ट अंदर next accounts payable accounts payable ना करना दोनों करना द
liability
liability इलायची मसला को नंदो ने बिजाय इन तेरी four thousand and thirty two thousand so is it increasing or decreasing
rate
two thousand rupees decrease यदि current liability कोरन्या इधर
निकला चेन
yes
minus
so let's decrease in accounts payable two thousand just a minute last one expenses payable means outstanding expense expense paid चाहिए ना दोनों बोलना नमला कुड़का ना द सो इट इस a current liability how much अकार लाइवलिटी seven thousand ten thousand आयता मारी अब इधर
add in
add in मून आए देना just a minute so expenses payable three thousand बोले ना द current liability कोई दिखाना सो वे हैव to add that so plus increase in expenses payable इतने amount three thousand add in इधर इन्हें नमक टैक्स को कर का नहीं लो extraordinary items अंदर सो वे रास्ते इस a final answer cash flow from operating so what is your answer one lakh sorry fourteen lakh how much
thirteen thousand
fourteen lakh fourteen lakh thirteen thousand thirteen fourteen lakh thirteen thousand
fourteen lakh fourteen thousand fourteen lakh fourteen thousand
इसे टैक्स तेरा अंदर fourteen lakh twenty thousand sixty thousand उदास fourteen lakh fourteen thousand
fourteen thousand
fourteen lakh fourteen yes and so तेरा printing mistake अना fourteen lakh fourteen thousand is your final answer that is known as cash flow from operating activities is it clear to you hello clear ना
hmm
okay so this is a basic question या निंगर इन या इधर नो के को टाइम and I say main questions इन्हें अरे तनी के ना दोनों profit and loss account yes now it is very simple निंगर तनी के ना द net profit salaries ना बोले ना इधर साला सुर्दी एन देखने चूड़िक ना सुर्दी any doubt इला check salaries नो accounts payable लेना three thousand असप्स इन ला ये पर ने बिजनेस मानव निकल इला thirty four thousand thirty two thousand thirty द two thousand इधर इधर increase in expense payable अन three thousand okay okay check